Good evening. As Chairman of Hartford Board of Education, I hereby call to order April 18th, 2023's regular meeting. I'm sure you notice our background looks a little different tonight as we have a set behind us for a show that's being put on. I want to give a tremendous shout out to the Cassella High School Performing Arts Team for displaying hard work and getting this show up and running. With that being said, I wish to warm or extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. The Board, the Superintendent and I are pleased that you have joined us as we celebrate achievement, review information, make policy decisions related to the effective operation of Hartford Public Schools. This is a regular meeting and all items that will be discussed or voted on this evening have been posted as required by state law. As the Hartford Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to the reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policies for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve the problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the Superintendent. The monthly meetings of the Board are open to the public. They're at a time when the Board conducts its business of governing the school system in a public arena. The regular meetings are not meetings with the public. Therefore, comments from the audience will be confined to the time designated for public to address the Board. Decorum and courtesy are important elements in effective public meetings. Please silence your cell phones and communication devices and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated that proceedings be accurately recorded, I may have to ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased that you have taken this time to join us this evening. We are very proud of the school system and thank you for your interest in Hartford Public Schools. Now this will be read in Spanish.
Primero, si necesita interpretación al español, por favor levante la mano y la intérprete le ayudará en este momento. Buenas noches, el presidente de la Junta de Educación de Hartford ha llamado a orden esta reunión ordinaria de la junta del 18 de abril 2023. Damos una cálida bienvenida a todas las personas presentes y a nuestros televidentes. La junta y la Superintendente se complacen que sean unidos a nosotros para celebrar logros, revisar información y tomar decisiones relacionados con el funcionamiento efectivo de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Esta es una reunión ordinaria y todos los asuntos que serán discutidos o votados en esta tarde han sido notificados como lo requiere la ley estatal. Como Junta de Educación de Hartford, estamos aquí para establecer metas, escuchar los informes de la Superintendente, aprobar los presupuestos, contratos y nombramientos de personal y establecer normas para el distrito. No estamos aquí para tomar decisiones administrativas o resolver problemas individuales. La administración es la responsabilidad de la Superintendente. Las reuniones mensuales de la junta están abiertas al público. Son el momento en que la junta lleva a cabo su tarea de gobernar el sistema escolar en un espacio público. Las reuniones regulares no son reuniones con el público. Por lo tanto, los comentarios de la audiencia se limitarán al tiempo designado para el público dirigirse a la junta. El decoro y la cortesía son elementos importantes en reuniones públicas eficaces. Por favor, silencie sus teléfonos celulares o dispositivos de comunicación y absténganse de hablar mientras otros están hablando. Ya que es mandato legal de que los procedimientos sean grabados con precisión, es posible que tengamos que pedir orden periódicamente si el ruido interfiere con nuestras capacidades de grabación. Nos complace que se haya tomado el tiempo esta tarde para unirse a nosotros. Estamos muy orgullosos de este sistema escolar y les damos gracias por su interés en las escuelas públicas de Hartford.
Thank you. We'll now move on to public comments. Ms. Bella?
Thank you. We, as a Board in collaboration with the Superintendent and District Leadership, are committed to cultivating a culture of excellence at all levels of Hartford Public Schools. We thank you for taking the time to attend tonight's Board meeting. We appreciate you coming out to learn more about Hartford Public Schools and for sharing your thoughts and concerns. We have established a protocol to track and respond to concerns raised. We want you to know that we take your concerns seriously and to that end, staff will follow up within 48 hours if follow-up is required via the preferred method of contact the speaker has indicated on the sign-in sheet. We will follow this no-contact method of follow-up for the time being adhering to safety protocols. As a reminder, you have three minutes to speak. At the two-minute mark, the bell will ring letting you know that you have one minute left. At the second bell, please wrap up your comments. Now this will be read in Spanish.
Nosotros, la Junta de Educación, en colaboración con la Superintendente y personal del distrito, estamos comprometidos a cultivar una cultura de excelencia en todos los niveles de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Les agradecemos se haya tomado el tiempo para asistir en la reunión de la junta esta noche. Les agradecemos su participación y su deseo de aprender más sobre las escuelas públicas de Hartford y también por compartir sus pensamientos y preocupaciones. Nosotros tomamos sus preocupaciones muy seriamente y hemos establecido un protocolo para el seguimiento y respuesta a las inquietudes planteadas. El personal hará un seguimiento dentro de las 48 horas si fuera necesario a través del método de contacto preferido que el orador haya indicado en la hoja de registro. Seguiremos este método de seguimiento sin contacto por el momento adhiriéndonos a los protocolos de seguridad. Esa persona investigará su caso y se comunicará con usted dentro de las 48 horas. Les recordamos que tienen tres minutos para hablar. Cuando han pasado dos minutos, el timbre sonará dejándoles saber que le queda un minuto. Al segundo sonido, por favor, termine sus comentarios.
Our first speaker is Devon Chambers.
Hello. Hello, my name is Devon Chambers. I go to Achievement First. I'm a senior in high school and I work with Advocacy to Legacy where our mission is to teach others how to correctly advocate for themselves within the community. And I have my testimony here written on my phone. So I'm here today to advocate for driver's education in high schools in Connecticut. This affects me personally because driver's education programs are very expensive and me and my family cannot afford the cost of driver's ed for me to get driver's lessons. Without driver's ed in high schools, a full driver's education program price ranges from $599 to $719. Driving lessons cost between $85 an hour and $150 an hour. This can be an issue for other high school students as well. Their families may not be able to pay, may not be able to afford their driving programs. Importing, inputting driver's ed back in high schools would make it free for students to learn how to drive and get their driver's license. Another way this can be helpful for students is for their insurance as the longer you have your driver's license, the lower your insurance costs. And with more people learning how to drive from a younger age and having more experience on the road, this can possibly lead to less accidents on the road. Driver's education courses instill essential car knowledge, car maintenance, confidence while driving, defensive driving techniques, and rules of the road. Please consider adding driver's education back into the high school curriculum. Thank you for your time.
Akeem James. Good night. My name is Akeem James. I'm a student at Achievement First Hartford High School. I'm a part of Advocacy to Legacy. And as a group that focuses on advocating for community issues, we've worked on a variety of topics and we chose this topic about driver's education in high school specifically for 2023 because it's something that majority of us relate to as we are high school students. I'm going to talk about bringing driver's education into high schools and how beneficial it can be to families economically. In the north end of Hartford, the average family income is $31,000 to $40,000. Private driver's education institutions charge over $500 for driving classes. Many families in the north end of Hartford are not able to pay those expenses for a variety of reasons. Bringing driver's education into high schools would benefit families because students' eligibility for the service would be school-related and free of cost. I personally went through a private institution taking driving classes because luckily I was giving a sponsor and didn't have to pay out of pocket. Without that sponsor, I wouldn't have been able to afford driving school and get my license. I'm coming today to introduce the idea of bringing driver's education back into high schools and I am asking for the support of the Board of Education.
Akilia Jones. Hello, everyone. My name is Akilia James. I'm a senior in high school and I have been with Advocacy to Legacy for seven years. And we are an after-school program who advocate for issues that would benefit our community. This topic we choose, the topic we chose is important because obtaining a license about bringing driver, this topic is important because obtaining a license at this age is very important. So I'm here to speak about bringing driver's ed back into the high school curriculum or as an after-school program. Driver's education classes was taken out of high school curriculum because of the budget cuts and it wasn't an important requirement to graduate. The driver's ed classes are playing a place to teach students on the safety of driving and to help build confidence. As an ATO with a driver's license, driver's ed allowed me to learn the small details that are very important to becoming a safe driver. If I had driver's ed in school, I would have learned more information which would have been instilled into my everyday driving habits. Although I was gifted with the opportunity to have driving school, I still had to pay, still had to come out of pocket for certain things. So having driver's ed in the school, high school curriculum would benefit students who aren't financially stable to be able to open up bank accounts, enroll into school, and obtain a job. So I'm here, so I'm active for your support in adding the high school education, driver's education to high school curriculum. Thank you.
Isaiah Branch. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Isaiah Branch. I have been with Advocacy to Legacy for three or more years and I attend Achievement First. I am here to express why driver's ed should be in high school. Driver's ed should be in high school because studies have shown by receiving this education at a young age, it helps kids obey the rules of the road. My life career is to get my CDL and if driving school was in high school, I could be many steps closer to getting my CDL license. In the state of CT, in order to get a CDL, you must need your valid CT driver license. It must be 18 or older. Due to driving school no longer being in high school, I am further back from meeting this goal, so please consider adding this into the school's curriculum. And that's it.
Shalaya Brown. Good afternoon. My name is Shalaya Brown. I have been with Advocacy to Legacy for five to six years. I come to you today to discuss why driver's ed should be in high schools. Driver's ed educates students, drivers on the road. It teaches teens driving techniques and learns the details, making driving tasks and habits become second nature to teens and having a better understanding of the skills they need to have to become a driver. I'm currently a senior in high school and I have no driving experience on the road nor the methods of how to be a good driver. And having driver's ed in high schools would benefit me by giving me the experience and the knowledge on becoming a safe driver and having the confidence to take the wheel. Thank you.
Demone McLean. Hello, my name is Demone. I am 13 years old. I am in seventh grade and I'm here. Hello, I am Demone McLean. I am 13. Hello, my name is Demone McLean. I am 13 years old. I am in seventh grade and I'm here to talk about how driver's ed benefits students in teens. It can benefit them by learning how to change an engine. It can help them get more experience and ready for the roads. You can improve your driving skills and improve your license. It can be completed by certain driver ed courses and you will feel a sense of confidence after taking a driver's ed education and will be able to drive better.
Thank you, students. Corey Betts.
Good evening. I think we need to give these young, these young individuals a hand because that takes a lot of courage to come to this mic. My name is Corey Betts and I'm the newly-elected president of the Greater Hartford Branch of the NAACP. I am here today to discuss some pressing issues in our education system that requires your attention and action. Let me be clear, I have been following the Board of Education meetings virtually due to my work commitment. As you may know, the NAACP has a rich history of uplifting the rights of Black Americans and standing in solitary with all marginalized groups. The Greater Hartford Branch in particular has been dedicated to battling racism and discrimination in all forms, including education. I want to take a moment to state our commitment to education in addressing the racial disparities in resources and opportunities. As the president of the Greater Hartford Branch, I am dedicated to demanding transparency and holding the district accountable for addressing these disparities. Moving forward, I want to let, let you know that the Greater Hartford Branch will be actively investigating concerns that have been brought to us. These are some of the main concerns we will be tracking as we're going forward. Firstly, we are concerned about community engagement and communication. We believe that's very important. We have found it difficult to find up-to-date and complete information on the Hartford Public Schools website. For example, there is an SCG PTO training listed for 420, but it is unclear where and when this training is taking place. The family events calendar on the site is also out of date. The district is not compliant with the SCGs for all schools. Secondly, we are interested in information about the rollout of courses specified in Public Act 1912, Black, Puerto Rican, and Latinx Studies required to be offered to all Connecticut high schools. We want to know who is teaching these courses, what training they have received, how many students have participated in each year at each school, and what the plans are for the next year. We are particularly interested in school-level information, not just district-level information. Thirdly, we are concerned about the current chronic absenteeism rates and measures to address this issue. Incremental improvements to crisis-level absenteeism are not the answer. The Greater Hartford Branch is committed to contributing to productive dialogue and action around these issues. We are also concerned about the hiring freeze, vacancies, central offers versus school positions, expulsions and suspensions in the Buckley School renovations. We would appreciate a full report on what is happening with Buckley School renovations and the current situation for students, what are the plans and what are the conditions the students are dealing with in the meantime. We would like to, we would like to hear directly from students, staff, and teachers and families. Carol Gale spoke to this at the last meeting. Additionally, we would like an accounting of teacher diversity by school and grade for Hartford Public Schools. If this information does not exist, we would like to know what we'll, what we'll do to make it available. We are also interested in Hartford Public School and doing an increase in the number of Black teachers from our Hartford communities in our schools. And I want to be clear, the State Conference has a report that's coming out on Hartford, Bridgeport, New Haven, and all the major cities that, and Hartford is on that report. So I want you guys to know that as well. In closing, we look forward to consistent dialogue and welcoming communication from students, educators, families, to you and the Greater Hartford Branch. We believe that by working together, we can create a better future for our children and our community. Thank you and thank you for your time.
Patricia Mack.
Good evening, Hartford Board of Education members. I'm Patricia Mack and I'm back with some good news. I'm here to report on the Kerry Saxon Perry mural project at Sand School. Approved contract manager Levy Cordulus and co-organizer myself met with Corinne Barney last Friday. Security believes that the second mural on the fence would block the sightlines of the playground. Ms. Barney said that the district would remove the fence during the future school renovations. So this portion of the project will be eliminated. Therefore, students with good attendance will not create a second mural or receive the proposed incentives which were budgeted for the project. Installation of the large mural will still proceed. We learned that the city of Hartford will not reimburse project manager Levy Cordulus for the mural insurance policy that he's been paying for for months out of his pocket. Mr. Cordulus also suggested that we paint the Sand School outside pillars to add to the beautification of the grounds. This suggestion was denied since the funds for the school are not available. However, there will be funds left over from the grant due to the elimination of the second mural. All activities and items needed for this event will be purchased by the school and aligned with the scope of the work outlined in the grant/contract. Lead artist Ellis Archivari will not receive the standard customary deposit for his work. He has agreed to a full payment at the end of the project. We would like to extend an informal invitation to each Board member. The mural reveal date is Saturday, June 10th. Please mark your calendars accordingly. Sand students' budget will fund the reveal ceremony. Our mural committee will be planning the ceremony and sending out formal invitations. The invitations, the committee members are as follow. Patricia Mack, Lucette Burke Black, Corinne Barney, Courtney McFroy, and Dr. Bethany Silver. If you have any questions or concerns, please feel free to contact myself or Mr. Cordulus. And just on a note, I just wanted to say to the students, thank you for the driver's ed because it was at Weaver High School where I too understood the meaning of what it is to drive. And if we give our children things to come to school for like driver's ed, it might just make them interested in learning. Thank you.
Michael Downs.
Good evening, full Board members. Superintendent, my name is Michael Downs. I'm president of Hartford Federation of Substitute Teachers. Also live at 74 Rosemont Street in Hartford. I, one of the things I wanted to bring up was the fact that substitute teachers are still talking about the fact that they haven't received or didn't receive or went on the list to receive a retention bonus. And we're the only group that did not receive a retention bonus. And another thing is that we're, we're interested in an incident that happened at Mary Hooker School where the substitute teachers was assaulted and we've been, we have been looking into that. It also brings up the other issues concerning assaulting of substitute teachers. In Nashville, one of the teachers that was killed in the mass shooting there was a substitute teacher as well as one of the teachers at Sandy Hook was a substitute teacher. And several of the mass shootings at schools around the country, the majority of them included substitute teachers. So we are concerned about the issue of security of substitute teachers. Also, driver ed. I'm glad that brought up, that was brought up tonight because that's how I learned to drive, was driver ed in high school. That was in 1958 and I couldn't have gotten a driver's license at age 16 unless I took driver's ed. So I took that course and I was able to obtain my driver's license and I certainly learned a lot from that course. So I think it's important and it's also a type of a course that will encourage students to come to school. And then Kerry Perry was a good friend of mine. And that mural that we've been talking about building at Sand School is just dragging on too long. Got to bring that up. And I'm glad that the NAACP has come back into our education system again. I've been a member of the Greater Hartford Branch of the NAACP for over 40 years and certainly it's important that we be concerned about the civil rights and education of our students as well as their parents. Thank you.
Carol Gale.
Good evening, members of the Board of Ed, Superintendent of Schools. My name is Carol Gale. I'm a Hartford resident and the president of Hartford Federation of Teachers. There are two items on tonight's agenda that I would like to comment on. But first, I would also like to applaud our students who are here. I know they had to leave, but they were speaking to my heart as a social studies teacher, seeing the civic engagement as well as the terrific suggestion that they raise for the Board to consider driver's ed. And I agree with the other members who said it might be a good incentive to encourage students to be in school and do well. So, back to the agenda. The first item is the proposed calendar for the academic year 2324, which is on your agenda for adoption this evening. As I indicated last month, HFT certainly extends our thanks to Madeline DeGroen for working with us on this calendar, giving us adequate time to get input and see that that input was actually used. So thank you for that and we certainly hope that the Board of Ed passes that tonight. Secondly, I would like to comment on the contract with ESS that's up for renewal. In tonight's agenda, there are several pieces of data listed that indicate that the 13-member team employed by ESS made some success towards decreasing disciplinary incidents, improving GPAs, and avoiding out-of-district placements. This is certainly progress. It then necessitates the question, how can we replicate the strategies used making these gains within Hartford Public Schools such that we can reallocate the 1.7 million back to our own employees and school budgets especially so that we can also offer the other 31 schools the additional support as the eight schools are currently receiving under ESS? HFT hears from many of those other 31 schools in the district where we do have students with behavioral challenges, complex special needs, and are sometimes recommended for outplacement and at times that outplacement is denied. This places an extra burden on the classroom educators who have to manage frequent classroom disruptions as well as on the other students in the class who must also keep adjusting to the disruptions to their learning. This is the type of situation that sometimes can leave staff and students not feeling safe. A safe learning environment is the key to education. Students who do not feel safe cannot attend to the academic tasks required of them. One final comment I'd like to make, not related to the agenda, is to personally thank Mr. Regora for his leadership in creating a legislative task force and inviting the HFT to join the initial conversation on that. HFT certainly looks forward to participating in this endeavor. Thank you very much.
Michelle Jefferson.
Good evening, board members and superintendent. My name is Michelle Jefferson. I am a licensed clinical social worker and a proud resident of Hartford. Um, I just wanted to update you and inform you guys. I know the district itself and overall nationally, we talk about, as you mentioned, substitutes, um, having a shortage with teachers, but incident occurred yesterday in my daughter's classroom. She is a young, beautiful African-American girl who's, who was referred to as, referred as an idiot by her teacher, Mrs. Jennifer White, amongst the entire classroom. Um, I brought it to the principal's attention and CC'd quite a few people from the community. Um, just to give a little context, my daughter has had to cope with unimaginable losses and was forced to learn about mortality twice this year. In a time when my daughter needed empathy and compassion from her local parente's caregiver, she instead was greeted with the harsh reality of adultification and implicit biases. When a phenotypical white teacher calls a phenotypical black student idiot while in the company of diverse persons, it reinforces the superiority and inferiority students inherently feel in educational situations, institutions, excuse me. Researchers have found unconsciously biopic students learn about their inferiority in the educational environment. This narrative is institutionally upheld throughout their educational endeavors. The constant invalidation of life experiences and required assimilation to dominant norms subscribes to poor engagement, decreased academic success, and instances of adolescent dropouts. Even if the teacher simply used the word idiot while in the conversating with my daughter, the theory of observatory apprenticeship suggests that students can learn how to further oppress their black peers by simply observing how their teachers interact with black students. Thus, the students in the classroom will learn to use the word idiot when interacting with their biopic peers. As we know, teachers' implicit biases affect the academic trajectory of the biopic students. Researchers agree that implicit biases could be carried into the learning environment, drastically impacting the youth by sustaining the opportunity gap, achievement gap, and overall systemic oppression minorities face in education facilities. I can go on and on, but I'm here to ask a few questions. What professional development will this teacher and other teachers receive in regard to this incident? What future and current trainings are the teachers in Hartford are provided, um, are providing for teacher implicit biases? Um, thank you, and once again, I just want to make it a point that this is not an incident that will be swept under the rug, um, and it will not be taken lightly. I think the investigation was not conducted thoroughly. Um, a half a day to talk to a couple of handful of students, I would like for this teacher to be removed and for an investigation to be conducted by an outside, um, academic person. Thank you.
Alyssa Peterson.
Good evening, board members and superintendent. Uh, it's been a while since I've addressed you, uh, what with COVID, it's been about two years now, but, uh, I used to address the board quite often over the last 30, uh, years. I, I came down tonight, I've been wanting to speak or come down and speak to you. We get updated by, uh, board member Walker at our, our local meetings monthly, so we kind of know what you're up to. I also look at the agendas and, and read what's going on. I wanted to encourage you, there are a bunch of us out there in the public that would like to see some kind of marrying of CREC and the Board of Ed and the union. I'm not sure how it's going to happen over the next year or two, but I think we all agree that you're not being funded enough. This, this latest crisis of funding is just, is unacceptable, and that we've got two boards of eds running really for Hartford. They're not sustainable. Uh, I'm not saying one is better than the other, but I truly admire and, and thank you for what you've tried to do, and certainly superintendent, uh, you've tried to keep so many schools open, keep different schools operating in those schools. I don't think it's gone very well, but again, it's a, it's a, a factor of budget. I hope with the new mayoral, uh, with the new mayor coming in, and then in another year after that, some new legislative members, we can try to find some kind of solution where we're either pulling money from CREC into your system, again, marrying the system, trying to, uh, come up with a different kind of funding vehicle, but it's not working. And how it's not working is our neighborhood schools are suffering, and we're seeing this giant busing, uh, budget, which is just unacceptable to bus the children out of Hartford. The neighborhoods are suffering. The number one comment I hear when I walk around trying to advocate for whatever I'm advocating for this week is that, um, the children don't know one another. They don't go to school together, they don't go to the parks together, they don't play in the streets together. It's, the fabric of Hartford is disintegrating. Our, our schools should be the focus of where they go from morning to night to play, to, to be educated, to recreate. It's, 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 the system is, we are harming the children with this hybrid system that we've created of CREC and the Board of Ed. It was, I, I think it's an unintended consequence of chef. Um, I, I'm so sorry it's happened this way. I don't think it was the way it was intended, but we have to come up with a solution. And I just wanted to come down and thank you for what you do. I'm sorry for, uh, the budget problems, but just know that there are those of us out there, we're going to find a way to come up with a solution over the next year or so. Our, thankfully, our mayor is leaving that was not supportive of the Board of Ed, did not participate whatsoever with the school system. And I know superintendent, he wasn't your, you weren't his first choice. So I, I kind of think that that's where a divide happened years ago, and we just haven't seen the support from the city of Hartford, uh, politicians that we needed for our Board of Ed. So, um, I just want to plant this seed. We need a new solution and, and to, to keep you apprised of it, um, and, and to thank you again for what you're doing, and I'm sorry for this difficult budget session. Have a good evening.
Our last speaker exercising his right to speak twice is John Walton.
Good evening, superintendent, distinguished board members. Chairman Regar, you wasn't here at the last board meeting, and I wanted to give you your flowers. I appreciate, as did, uh, the president of the teachers' union about the initiation of the legislative portion. I respect your leadership, and I'm grateful for that. I brought my daughter here with me this time, just so the board and every single member and parent could actually see what we should be focused on. Because I think so, so, so much, we get focused on our titles, we get focused on our processes, we get focused on all the things that are unimportant because they all should be about these children. This is Lady, and Lady's a nail in the night, and Lady is a representation of all of your children and all of our children. She is a foundational black, uh, American, and she's Puerto Rican. Rich, diverse culture, which our community is. I'm here for two reasons, though. One reason I'm here is because I'm a parent, I'm a resident, and I'm a stakeholder. The other reason I'm here is to introduce everybody to one of my members, because I want people to actually see when they make their decisions who it affects. This gentleman is a native of Grenada, 25 years living in, in, in the United States, 20 years living in Hartford, two, four children, two Hartford residents, and has given 12 years of service to the Board of Education and was released. And we think it's unfair, and it was unjust, and it was definitely done wrong. So I just want people to see and get an image of when they go through their processes, and we go through our little rituals of how we do business, who it actually affects, who is actually pertaining to. You see, so often, you know, what I learned about in my health condition and, and going through what I did over 11 years ago, is I had to remove ego from what decisions I make. See, because we put our ego in things and we think that processes are supposed to be for self-interest. But the processes that we create here, the decisions that are made here, everything that is done, is done for the benefit of the people who live in this community and the children who go to these schools. Those are the people we're accountable to. And I just wanted to bring people here so that you could see who you're actually accountable to. And we want to be given the same respect as parents in West Hartford. We want to be given the same respect as parents in Avon, the same respect as affluent parents in Greenwich, because everything that needs to be done, needs to be done for the benefit of the little ones and their parents. Now, the superintendent, we've had plenty of discussions, I would definitely, and the board members, like to see more unapologetic leadership. You, we have a rich, we have a rich diverse community, and just because we like rap music or reggaeton does not mean we're thugs, does not mean we're ghetto. We're an, we're, we're an informed community, and we should be treated with the same respect as any suburban community. And actually, I'm, I'm proud of the Board of Education. I look, I love the diversity. I love what you guys are doing. I, me and the superintendent, we don't agree on everything, but the things we agree on, we talk about, things we disagree, we talk about, and we're open about that. So I'm actually here to speak more to the direct level. And, and what that means in the direct level for me, and for my family, and for my members, is we have to stop with all these processes that protect us. These processes are supposed to be designed to give a helping hand to the children and to the community. It's not about us. We are in the public service sector. We serve the public. That is our number one goal and should be our number one agenda. I want to give shout-outs to our community chief of, of partners, uh, because she has helped us along with the chief of operations to get that youth program, and to our students who are here, those are our new, those are our future leaders, kings and queens. We want to give them opportunities to work with us. I was up there giving them my information so we could help give them a job opportunity to at least fund it until the board could prioritize it as education. So I'm just so proud of them. That's what it's all about. I want to give a shout-out to our chief of OTM, who is actually creating or beginning to create the dialogue between the community and the board and how we should move forward in our future. A lot of my issues right now, and I'll just be honest, superintendent, on the direct level, we need to, we have, we, Hartford pays our directors and, and, and our supervisors a lot of money, and they should be accountable for the decisions they make, and they should be accountable for the behavior they present. There should not be this, well, they don't, people don't want to meet with you because they don't like you, or people don't want to meet with you because you're brash and you're unapologetic about what you ask for. The community members should not have to ask to be a part of the process. We should be able to demand it, like every other town, respectfully. And for the union, because I am a union leader, I am a union president, we have what is, and I, I'm, I'm speaking to the choir, we have a collective bargaining agreement. Collective, management, labor, bargaining, which means we negotiate. Agreement, which means we agree on what we talk about. That's a marriage. And although we understand in that marriage that the authority position is often given to administration, we shouldn't treat the labor side of that marriage like dirt. The, the people of this community re deserve more respect. And I just hope that in the process of our day-to-day, we can start getting the respect that we deserve. I thank you, board members, for what you're doing. I truly am pleased at what I see the board initiating. I thank you, superintendent, for your time and your attention to our matters. I also forgot to give a shout-out to, uh, the deputy superintendent, who has been very open with having conversations and bridging the gap for some of the things that we've been asking for. So I appreciate, appreciate you all, and there will be plenty of time to critique and criticize, but we also have to compliment when it's due. Thank you.
And that concludes public comment.
Thank you. Before we move forward in our agenda, I do want to applaud the dedicated students of Achievement First for their civic engagement and the due diligence that they conducted in preparation for tonight. These are the voices that are the most important for the board to hear. Uh, so again, I applaud, uh, the students as well as their advisors and parents for really making the effort. We now move on to the report of the chair. Uh, I want to recognize, um, there have been several students who have reached out wanting to learn more about how they could participate on the Board of Education. Thank you for those who have expressed interest in public service and the local governance. As you'll see in this month's board report in March, we have relaunched our student senate, administration and, um, student personnel. In the coming months, two students will be nominated to sit on the Board of Ed, to sit on the Board as student representatives. I know I speak for my colleagues when I say we look forward to their perspective and contributions to the Board of Education, and realize that we will all become better board members and advocates by hearing their voices. I also want to make the public aware that the first Legislative Advocacy Task Force meeting will be later this week. Uh, I also want to thank all the, um, various stakeholders, as Ms. Gale had mentioned earlier. Um, very, very much look forward to this conversation and how we can help the district move forward from a legislative perspective. As always, I would continue to remind at every board meeting, you could find the full committee reports, as well as attachments and videos in the meeting's agendas on Board Docs. As a reminder that all committee works, all committee and workshop meetings are livestreamed, as well as viewable after the meeting. The YouTube links are saved in each meeting agenda on Board Docs. I encourage the community to view the meetings and read the reports when possible. If you have any questions, please contact Christina Santiago, our board liaison, at We will now move on to the report of the superintendent.
Good evening, everyone. If we can share the data display, Ms. Santiago, just so that we can do a quick overview of how we're tracking towards, uh, one of our student engagement, uh, metrics. I am happy to report that the positive momentum that I did share last time we were together here continues. Students are attending school more regularly since this time last year. So you can see some, uh, data trends there, and really what we want to see is, on the chronic absenteeism rate, those are the, the salmon and orange, uh, bars there, that the orange ones, uh, have to be tracking downward, and we see that across the months. That is how things are tracking, and then on the average daily attendance rate, those are the green and the blue bars. We want the blue bars to be higher, that means that more students are coming to school, uh, daily. If we progress to the next slide, we have just an overview across schools comparable to last year. So while the blue bar shows our average daily attendance as of April 17th, you see that most our schools are trending in the right direction with some big gains made, uh, specifically by our comprehensive high schools, McDonough and Milner, just to, to name a few, but overall, 30 of our 39 schools have improved their average daily attendance since 2022. Um, and so we'll, we'll actually give a shout-out to 21 schools who have reached our quarter three SMART goal of 90% average daily attendance rate. Um, so kudos to those schools. And if we go to the next one, um, we can look at a school-by-school breakdown relative to chronic absenteeism. There has been some significant improvements in schools, uh, including including Weaver, Milner, Naylor, Kinsella High School, Burns, Rossin, MLK, and a few others. And we know that chronic absenteeism is not where we want it to be. We actually want to be where we were pre-COVID, trending around 22 to 25. We're still tracking toward getting better every single day. But I do want to acknowledge the incredible work that continues to happen within the district, the work and the support and the partnership of our families, our staff, our leadership, and our community partners. We actually have 19 schools, about 50% of our schools that have already met our April SMART goal to reduce chronic absenteeism to 35% or less. A few more shout-outs here. Naylor for reducing their chronic absenteeism rate to 15%, which is below pre-pandemic data. Dwight Belizzi rolled out their mentoring pilot program with our eighth-grade students and our community partners. Burr for their very strategic support of eighth-grade students with transition plans that include high-leverage interventions to address their attendance concerns and inclusive of family. And when we think about students that need the highest level of support in our I-Gols programs, Breakthrough North, Burns, MD Fox, Naylor, Parkville, Rossin, and ELAM's I-Gol programs for reducing their chronic absenteeism rates by over 10% in the month of April. So again, we're trying to focus not just across all of our schools, but in our subgroups as well. And I'll mention two other things, just to celebrate the hard work from our team for the College and Career Readiness Team in partnership with Higher Heights, right? They led the career fair at the Excel Center for our 11th graders. We had approximately 60 colleges and universities from Connecticut and beyond. And again, we continue to create a culture in partnership with our school counselors, our educators, our leaders, to continue to encourage and support our students around their college and career readiness. And lastly, and Chairman Riggers spoke to our student leadership. Superintendent's Student Advisory Council has more than 20 students representing seven district high schools. The mission of our Superintendent's Advisory Council is to provide a platform for students across our schools to work in partnership with myself, with our teams, in a collaborative, solution-oriented, problem-solving manner. So during their March meeting, students built, they were working on their personal leadership theory. And on their April 5th convening, we discussed their leadership and their role in the upcoming Youth Summit. And so there, as the chairman referenced, two students will be selected to serve on the student board. We want to do that before the year ends. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Do want to give a couple of minutes to see if there's any questions for my colleagues as it relates to the superintendent's report. Seeing none. Superintendent?
I did forget to reference that The Little Shop of Horrors has been a Broadway and Hollywood sci-fi smash musical for many years, and it is coming right here to this stage. And so just a shout-out for Thursday, the performance dates Thursday, April 27th, and Friday, April 28th at 7:00 PM. And so tickets will be sold at the door, and are $5 for students, $10 for adults. Come and support our outstanding, talented students and staff.
Thank you. We now move on to the business agenda. Business agenda, item 4.1. Contract Continuation Approval: Effective School Solutions. Motion that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute a contract with Effective School Solutions for the term outlined in the contract and in June 30th of 2024 at the amount not to exceed $1,733,660. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Superintendent?
Yes, just a little background on the agenda item. We know that we continue to face one of the most urgent national challenges that is facing our young people, their mental health. Prior to the pandemic, there was already a mental health epidemic affecting our young people, with one in five students suffering from a mental health disorder. We have been working with ESS Effective School Solutions, which is a regional leader in providing school-based mental health care for students to dramatically strengthen our mental health support continuum. This is an initiative that was designed to counter the anticipated increase in frequency and intensity of mental health challenges, also to ensure that our existing clinical staff was not overwhelmed, and also to lay the foundation for a higher level of in-district mental health programming that will serve as a, quite frankly, a less costly and more effective alternative to outplacement for many students. And we're pleased to report that year two of this initiative has been a strong success. We have shared some of that information and data points, those data points with you. And we're looking to continue to provide a comprehensive Tier III wraparound program for our students, including individual therapy, group therapy, family therapy, monthly parent and caregiver support groups, urgent clinical sessions as necessary, the support in classroom, which is right, the push-in support for our educators, quality and risk management services, specialized protocols, and direct clinical supervision through the onsite program coordination that takes place. I will pause there for questions.
Thank you. I wanted to see if my colleagues have questions. Board Member Johnson?
Yes, good evening, everyone, and thank you, superintendent. You know, after hearing comments of having, you know, unapologetic leadership and things like that, I have to ask a question. Is this working? I just want to make sure that this is working. I remember this coming before the board last year, and there were some, you know, questions about it, you know, in terms of the number of students and how much we're spending per student, so forth and so on. And I just have to ask the question, do we feel as a district, this is working? Is it working for the teachers? Is it working for the students? Before I can make an educated decision, I just have to know, is it working?
Yes, I can speak to some of those data points, and then I can ask the team to also join us in responding. Intensive wraparound support services include over 6,700 services or therapeutic services delivered to 85 students. 20% decrease in average disciplinary incidents per week after students participate in the service delivery. 20% decrease in chronic absenteeism, also for the students participating. 69% of students maintain or increase their grade point average after participation. Improved trajectory of student wellness over the course of the year, with clinicians reporting student wellness increasing by 73% after 25 weeks of the program. And 98% of avoidance of out-of-school, of out-of-district placement referrals for students participating in ESS. Those are several of the metrics that we're looking at as well. And I can pause and see if either Ms. Hoffman or ESS team would like to add anything else.
Hi, good evening, superintendent, members of the board. I'm Duncan Young. I'm CEO of Effective School Solutions. And I appreciate the question. Thank you for that. Any investment of any size with a school district, I think it's important that we have the metrics to make sure that we're tracking our progress and ensuring that we're getting the desired results. I think the superintendent did a very thorough job outlining what we would see as some of the key data points in the materials that we provided. Data tracking and analysis is a really core and fundamental part of what we do. We're big believers in that term. If we can't measure it, we can't manage it. And we hold ourselves to a very high standard in reporting back to you and making sure that we're getting measurable results for students. So just to recap, the key things that we would see, chronic absenteeism decreases at a level, and I appreciate the district-wide data, which I had not seen before, at a level that I think even exceeds the differences that you're seeing district-wide. And I saw a number of our ESS schools up there on the graph in terms of the, among the biggest gainers or the biggest reducers in terms of chronic absenteeism. So a 25% reduction in chronic absenteeism, a 20% reduction in absences, a 20% reduction in disciplinary incidents, and as the superintendent mentioned, seven out of 10 students maintaining or improving GPA. All of those levels are a step above our first year of progress last year. And so what this really indicates is for that level of student that we're servicing, which is what we would call a Tier III-plus student in the district's multi-tiered systems of support framework, these are students with the most intensive emotional, behavioral, mental health challenges, students who often would be at risk of an outplacement to a private therapeutic day school. The data indicates that we're getting very, very strong results with this at-risk student population. Happy to answer any questions.
Our Ms. Brody?
Thank you. Two questions. One, how could we for certain attribute those absenteeism improvements to ESS?
That's a great question. There are obviously other great things going on in all of the schools that we are operating within. And as the superintendent pointed out, there clearly is a large district-wide initiative to improve chronic absenteeism. So I don't think we can say that all of that reduction is due to ESS. What I would infer from the ESS reductions being slightly higher than the district reductions as a whole would be that the ESS program is having a net positive effect in addition to the other initiatives that the district is taking on. But certainly, I cannot say that for certain.
Thank you. The other, I don't know if the question is for you. I know Ms. Hoffman tried to answer the question in the committee meeting. You did a great stab at it, but I am more so looking for us, we appreciate what you do, and this is not to be slight at you, but imagining a district where we don't need you, right? That we don't need to pay you. So I'm always interested in our efforts with all of our contracts. Like, if the board is clear on the efforts that we're making in our hiring, if we are always clear on that, I wouldn't have this question probably every single time a contract comes. So this is not for you, it's really for us. Talent management, what are we doing that we don't have to contract out so much? And we don't have our own employees to do all the wonderful things like you're doing? So that is a concern of mine. I'm still waiting on some type of report on that because you're not going to be here forever. So I need to understand how we are going to obtain our own staff. And that's my comment.
Thank you. Board Member Walker?
Yeah, my question too does have more of a district-wide focus. But I can talk to you in some ways. Your program serves 85 students. And so I hear about students that I believe are probably Tier III students from other teacher interactions. They don't get your services. And so I guess I'm trying to determine, one, how do you get students referred to you? And what sense do you have, working with the district? Like, what percentage of Tier III students are you really touching within the district?
Yeah, so as the individual speaking before, we're operating in eight out of the more than, I'm going to get the exact number incorrect, but, you know, almost 50 schools kind of within the district. So we're not in every school. I would say in the schools in which we are operating, I think we believe we're getting the vast majority of those, not just Tier III students, I think that upper level of Tier III that maybe have been through lower tiers of support within the continuum of care, but haven't necessarily been successful with those continuum, with those levels of support. And that's generally when they would come to us. So I'll speak in generalities, and I'll turn it over to my colleague, Amy Barrett, who can talk about exactly what those interactions look like at the school level. But generally, in all of our school interactions, we're identifying what we call a gatekeeper. So this is our partner, kind of at the school. That could be an assistant principal, that could be a lead counselor. And we're meeting with that individual weekly to review our caseload. When we're first building the caseload, we're identifying students that might meet the eligible criteria for our services. For example, they have not been successful with some of those other supports that have been offered. We're determining if it would be clinically appropriate to bring them in to the program. We are conducting a full clinical assessment for that student, and then we're determining in partnership with our colleagues in the district if this program can be beneficial to them. Once the caseload is built out, we're meeting with them every week, and we're determining who's ready to exit, whether or not anyone needs to be escalated to a higher level of care or might need additional support. Amy, would you like to speak about those relationships at the school level?
Yeah, let me clarify the question too, because I get your process. What I was really trying to target is, do you have a sense of what percentage of students that are in that space are you actually getting? The sense that I have is that there are, what I hear are that students who are disruptive in classrooms across the district, in different schools, students that I think would be candidates for your service. And so, so even at schools that you serve, I mean, do you get the sense that you're getting all Tier III students, some Tier III students? Or are there students that need your services that you're not able to serve, even in the space that you are now?
Sure.
When we speak about the Tier III students that ESS is supporting, generally, those students are identified students, so they have an IEP already in place. When you speak about students that might be disruptive in class, they might not meet the criteria that we see students rising to that ESS may support. So some of those more clinical needs are the students that we see being referred to ESS, rather than maybe a bump in the road with some students, maybe something happened that the social worker or a counselor could address a one-off, so to speak, and then students can return and, you know, continue with their day. But I think when we talk about the high level of need that we're seeing with our students that engage in ESS supports, it is generally the kids that are already identified, the kids that could potentially be outplaced as a result of those high needs. And so the support that we receive with ESS is tampering that need so that we keep kids in district, we support them through a variety of supports, whether it's like Amy or Duncan was mentioning, one-on-one therapy, group therapy, families also involved. So that's a big component that we see on a daily basis, and the goal is to keep kids in district.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate what you're saying. So it hasn't answered my question, so I will stop. So I'm going to look, I guess, towards the district. What I'm hearing, I hear what you're saying, there are students who I clearly believe are Tier III students as I'm hearing the description of teachers. And so I think maybe at the district level, we need to get a better sense of who really fits in this space and how they're being served. I applaud what you're doing. What I'm really trying to say is that it feels like the lucky few. There's a set of students who get your service and... There's a set of students who get your service and, and benefit from the service. I'd either ask that we figure a way to scale it so that everyone who needs it can get it, or to figure out a way that we can deploy these skills to other places, because just 85 students, it just doesn't feel like it's touching all the need. And even after we approve it, I don't feel like the need, so it's totally met. So I guess all I can say is, my action, I guess, at a district level, maybe superintendent is, let's figure out what the need is, and, and then maybe see moving forward, is there a way to scale this, or is there a way to, to bring this to, to more of the population of students who, who need it? I, I just can't believe in a school district of 13,000-plus students and really probably closer to 15,000 students, that only 85 students need this service.
Thank you. Board Member Bella?
So thank you so much, and thank you, Board Member Walker. And what I'm hearing is, you know, there's need, probably outweighs our resources here. And I, I appreciate and underscore that statement. You know, I'm thinking about Board Member AJ's, Board Member Johnson's comment about, you know, is it helping? And just having heard this program like from the beginning, from the first contract, and then hearing it in committee, and hearing updates, and then hearing the continuation, and I really, what comes to mind when I read this data in front of me is one, hope, and then that this is really life-saving for a lot of youth. And, you know, we're no strangers to the headlines, to the stories, to the incident reports in our schools. And it's clearly, you know, some, in summary, a, a real cry for help. And for the 85 that do get your services, I, I appreciate that they're, your, your staff are in their lives. And I look forward to a day that we can say that 100% of our district is looked at in a, in a fully therapeutic way. Again, I'm going to underscore that it is a blessing that our students are in this district, that, that understand the trauma, trauma that, trauma exists in, in the lives of our children. And it, and it deserves respect and therapy because we see the, the outcome when it isn't there, the support that's needed. So I really appreciate your, this relationship, this partnership with the district. I look forward to a day that we can inherently build this into our school system and that this becomes a star and not a mark against the Harvard Public Schools. So thank you for your partnership.
Thank you. Board Member Johnson?
Thank you, Board Member Bello, for that, that sentiment and just putting us on a, a level playing, you know, a, a level filled with this. But my question is, if this program doesn't work, do those same students get referred to our alternative schools? Yes or no?
I would say it depends on the student, but I would say overall, most likely not. We, I would also like to add that we have strong supports in our schools currently with our social workers, our counselors, and we've done a tremendous amount of professional learning around trauma-informed practices with all teachers as well. So teachers are aware of the practices that need to be in place to support students. So I would not say all students, if ESS was not in place, would be outplaced. We currently have three students from the group that needed a more extensive, higher level of care. So I would say overall.
And then referred to, not, I don't mean to cut you off, but just, but then those three were then referred to our alternative schools?
It would, out of, a therapeutic program, so an out-of-district placement.
Out-of-district placement?
Yes.
And again, this may be inward-looking to our district. So how does this work with our alternative schools? Is there any, any data, any, you know, again, with the 89 students, you, you mentioned three, but if ESS was not in place, would the direct placement for these young people be our alternative programs? That, that's the question?
No.
No? Okay, thank you.
I, I do have, thank you, Board Member Johnson. I do have, I guess, a couple of comments and questions, hearing some of, some of the commentary tonight. So going back to a comment that Board Member Brody had mentioned in terms of, around sustainability, and then Board Member Walker around the selection process. For me, I think it would be helpful to get an understanding, like what would it cost if we were to outplace those 85 students right now without ESS? And then part two of that is, if I'm tying those two themes together of selection and sustainability, what I'm also seeing though is a, like, cost. This is funded through a certain budget. So then for me, it's like, okay, like, if we think this is good, then like how are we going to get there? Right? And I could appreciate all the work that's being done here, but I'm thinking 12 to 24 months down the road, if we want to serve 300 kids and build that capacity internally and sus, like, and be sustainable, like, I need to understand how do we, like, how do we get there? And maybe that's part of the legislative task force committee and so forth to, to, to help pass, but like, I'm trying to understand, how do we tie those two themes together?
Yes, I can speak to, if we were to outplace all 85 students, we can use the average cost, right? Because we think about an outplacement for students anywhere, let's say, average $80,000 to $100,000, not including all the other costs that are laid on top of that, right? We have transportation, which could be another $60,000, $80,000. So we're looking about $14 to $15 million for outplacing this entire group. When we're thinking about the sustainability of it, our team has already begun to explore the possibilities. There are some contracts, some grants already that teams are drafting content for. One is the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration Project Aware, which is Advancing Wellness and Resilience Education Grant. It is a grant that is over a five-year period, each year about $1.5 million. It would allow us to partner with other agencies, as well as the State Department of Education, to design a very strategic mental health support structure, including clinicians to deliver direct services to our students. There is another opportunity, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration Healthy Transitions Grant, and Young Adults with Serious Mental Disorders Program Grant. It's another grant funded over five years, about $750,000. And our teams, again, are actively in pursuit of those. But I, I just want to underscore that in addition to the tiered continuum framework, the supports that we already have, our young people have a deeper and wider level of need post-pandemic. And so it is something that we are acutely aware of and are trying to, not only through ESS, but through other partnerships, trying to, to address.
So in terms of numbers, if I heard correctly, this cohort, if not for ESS, north of $100,000 per, per student?
At least $150,000 to $160,000 per student, when we overlay the transportation and all the other costs.
Okay. Are there any further questions for my colleagues? Board Member Ledger?
Thank you so much. Good evening. I have a few questions. One of the questions is, how many students in this 85 are African-American, Hispanic, Asian, white? Like how, what's the breakup?
So we don't have the exact numbers, but we would estimate 85% plus within the cohort.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
85% plus of the students would be either black or Hispanic within the cohort.
Thank you. And the other question I have is, with regards to, for example, classroom push and support, what does that look like? Just one example, and what is the support in place for the teachers who, or the teacher who's, you know, teaching that class or who's in control of that class? And the other students who may witness or who may need some type of support with regards to any traumatic event that they may witness? Like what supports are in place for them?
Hi, good evening. So each of our students has a reset plan that we complete with our clinicians when they're in, throughout the intake process. Those reset plans are given to all of the teachers that work with those students. If a student is having a hard time in a class, depends on the school, but typically they'll just call our clinicians directly, or whatever the procedure is in, in individual schools, and our clinicians will push in and work with the student to de-escalate as much as they can to keep them in the classroom that might be doing some work with them, doing some grounding techniques, depending on the situation. If we need to, we'll pull them out immediately. We don't want to have a situation where a student is escalated and then it's causing trauma to the other children. So we would just immediately pull them out if it got to that point. But most of our work would be, we try to keep them in their, in their environment so they can continue their academics. And so we'll work with the teachers, we'll work with the students to be able to maintain them through different strategies within the classroom.
Okay, thank you. And is there a plan, some type of contingency plan for the sub, if there's a sub perhaps, who's in the classroom as opposed to the classroom teacher? Are they given this information?
They would have the same access to our clinicians as the regular, like, scheduled teacher. I'm positive that in all of the classrooms, there's the, our contact information and things like that, as well as constant communication with our teams that are in the school. So they're, they're always aware if there's a sub or if it's the regular scheduled teacher. So to work with them, you know, depending on what the student needs in that moment.
And I just wanted to say that I'm hoping that this, this service does not replace the, the need for students who need to be in a clinical day school or a therapeutic environment, more structured therapeutic environment, because those programs do exist for a reason and they do deal with the whole child. Because we're not a therapeutic school. We're not clinical day schools. So I just want to say that, and I hope that you're intentional. I believe you are, but I, I'm hoping that you continue to be intentional with regards to the needs of the students and the families and not just focus on the goal to be keeping them in school, keeping them in district.
The motion on the floor is that the Harvard Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute a contract with Effective School Solutions for the term outlined in the contract and in June 30th of 2024 at the amount not to exceed $1,733,660. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? Abstentions?
I abstain.
Abstain.
The ayes have it. The motion moves. Item 4.2, Contract Continuation Approval, Decision Ed. The motion, the motion that the Harvard Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute a contract with Decision Ed for the term outlined in the contract and in June 30th of 2024 at the amount not to exceed $58,200. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Superintendent?
Thank you. Yes, this is a request for software support contract renewal. Decision Ed provides K-12 Performance Management Classroom and Student Software, which helps integrate information from systems across the district into one single repository so that there can be ease of reporting and data visualization during year one of the contract. The district was granted perpetual licensing from Decision Ed Performance Management Software. However, we now need to continue to support with access to the, to the software at $58,200. One, one thing that I just want to share, and Chairman, you and I had been having initial conversation about this, and that is that we are going to be in the process of exploring whether or not for future years, Decision Ed is the appropriate. Relying on just software use is something that we're looking to see if we could do away with. And so this might be a transition year. We're actively looking to begin this summer, the research on that.
Thank you. Any questions for my colleagues? Board Member Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Superintendent, actually, I appreciate your, your comments. I know in committee we, we had asked about the unique value of this software, and I, I was going to say that, I think, in upcoming year, I'd want to see and learn more about it, to see the value and benefit we're getting from it. I, I do believe your staff gets some use from it. I'd invite you to come back, your staff, with what you find out and just let us know how we can move forward. It would be great to have something that can better leverage, like with Power School or our existing software that we already, you know, possess. Thank you.
Any further questions for my colleagues? Motion on the floor is that the Harvard Board of, Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute a contract with Decision Ed for the term outlined in the contract and in June 30th of 2024 at the amount not to exceed $58,200. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it. The motion moves. Item 4.3, Second Reading and Adoption, 2023-24 District Calendar. Motion that the Harvard Board of Education adopts the 23-24 District Calendar. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Superintendent?
Yes, and this is a calendar that does reflect input and feedback from several stakeholders, including our HFT and their membership, which 277 responded to the, to the survey administered. A few key points here, it is in alignment with our area districts, surrounding districts, to the extent possible, right? We do operate with an ecosystem of school choice, and so that's always a, a supportive move for us to make, especially for families that have students attending different districts. It includes our six full days of professional learning and 11 early release days. If you recall, we had moved toward all Wednesdays being an early release. We did get some feedback from our families that that was a significant inconvenience, and so we're trying to kind of balance, right, that, that tension to provide supports to our educators while also making sure that our families can plan ahead. And so we did reduce the number of early release days. One other point of reference is that we are, as a, in response to the request of the board, going to explore making a Dune Team a district holiday. We just have to take time to explore how to do that with current collecting bargaining agreements and processes.
Thank you. Do I have any questions or comments for my colleagues? Board Member Johnson?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure this is an easy vote for us, but just want to, just put out there for public consumption, we have checked the boxes, we've met with community, we have heard all that we needed to hear to make this informed decision. Is that accurate, Superintendent?
Our team has engaged, yes, with several stakeholders, yes.
Thank you. Seeing no comments or questions? Motion on the floor, the Harvard Board of Education adopts the 2023-2024 District School Calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it. The ayes have it. Item 4.4, Second Reading and Adoption, Policy 6172, Alternative Education Programs. Motion that the Hartford Board of Education adopts Policy 6172, Alternative Education Program. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Thank you, Chairman Rigor. The second reading and adoption of alternative education programs. This is a mandated policy. Alternative education means a school or program maintained and operated by the board that is offered to students in a non-traditional educational setting that addresses the social, emotional, behavioral, and academic needs of such students. Programs currently in place include HOPE I and II academies. As I stated before, I just wanted to make sure in our previous contract that, you know, we do have alternative education, and just want to make sure that, that we're not double offering services. That, that was, I think that was my main intent for that question, but that is the end of this reading. Also, which was not supposed to be on this agenda, was the equity policy, which I can share more information about later for those that are interested. We are postponing a second reading tonight on that to get more public participation.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments for Board Member Johnson?
Yes, I have a question.
Board Member Oliver?
Hello, thank you, and I'm sorry I can't be in person tonight, feeling a little under the weather. My question is, in reading the policy, one of the things I noticed is that it said that the board may form a cooperative arrangement with other boards of education, and I may just be missing it, perhaps in other language in the policy, but are we restricting our program offerings only to other boards of education?
That is a good question, and we're going to invite Dr. Silver up to give you more information.
Yeah, thank you for that question, and this policy does not restrict the policy to just other boards of education. It's mandated that we have an alternative education program policy in our policy manual, and that serves this purpose and also allows us the opportunity to have agreements with other boards of education should we establish programs to support students, specialized programs, alternative programs, and other boards of education might wish to enroll their students in those programs.
Board Member Oliver, does that address your question?
I, I apologize, it was a little hard to hear the audio there, but I got the impression that the answer is that it's not so limiting that we do have flexibility in the way we approach it. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional? Board Member Walker?
Since you broached this topic about cooperation between districts, is the implication and the intent that districts could cooperate and create a regional or area-wide school that would be an alternative education site for children from different districts to attend together? Is that anticipated or possible?
The possi, the policy does permit that possibility. It would have to be a decision that the Board of Education made.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any additional questions? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education adopt Policy 6172, Alternative Education Program. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it. The motion moves. Item 4.5, First Reading Policies Listed Below. Board Member and Policy Chair, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Chairman Rigor. For our first reading, we have a few policies here. Student attire. In November 2022, families joined us to review the student attire policy, which I'm very proud of, and want to give a shout out to Chief Blackburn in her, all of her efforts to get this, which addressed student uniforms. Data from the fall of 2022 survey was shared, noting that 30% of students and 27% of families agreed that student does not attend if they don't, don't have a uniform. Families reported valuing the principal's role in supporting students who may not have a uniform with spare uniforms, as well as spare uniforms from the Walcom Center. Families also asked for quality so-on slash iron-on logos that keep their color and shape through many washings. And it's funny because I'm going through that now. Revisions include these updates informed by our families. So I'm very proud of this first reading and proud of the engagement that we have here. And there's just not enough uniforms. I'm washing uniforms every three days, I promise you. Our next first reading is school governance councils. In December, families join us to review the School Governance Council policy. The School Governance Council, SGC, is the primary school-based decision-making body devoted to achieve its mission and vision. Toward this end, the SGC focuses on the analysis of student achievement, development of improvement plans, allocation of resources, programmatic and operational changes. This is an effective policy and is well implemented in our schools. The only revision is that voting members can no longer serve more than four terms, a change required by recent legislative updates. Onto our next first reading, recodification. The Policy Committee undertook significant recodification work following the CAPE Policy Manual Audit in November 2021. At that time, over 100 policies were updated with new numbers. No content to the policy was changed, only a change in the number. And I can go through the numbers. District accreditation, 1531 slash 6200 changed to 1531. Report cards changed from 1641 to 6146.12. Grading changed from 6146 to 6146.1. Smoking and tobacco use from 4118.51 to 4218.51, 24118232 slash 41, 4218-232. These are your nightly numbers. If you don't play these numbers, I don't know what you're doing. Legislative and Committee, Advocacy Committee. As we know, our amazing chairperson has established the Legislative and Advocacy Task Force, while a standing committee would be added via our governance process. Just quickly, want to give an update on our Juneteenth clarification the committee reviewed, and would like to explore adding Juneteenth as a district holiday, as the superintendent said. This is something that we are looking into. Bylaw 9020 Public Statement. The committee discussed the policy, looking to clarify when a board member speaks for themselves or on behalf from, of the board. Our next meeting is 5/1/23, and our staff liaison is Dr. Bethany Silver, and I am the chairperson, chair lead for the Policy Committee. These are our first readings.
Thank you, Board Member Johnson. As this is the first reading, no vote is required at this time. However, are there any questions or comments?
I have a comment.
Board Member Brody?
I do want to thank, because I'm the board member that brought up the Juneteenth, and I do thank Dr. DeGrom for her being open. To what I thank the superintendent for considering it for next go-round. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to the Cassette Agenda. Items on the Cassette Agenda, I do want to call out to my colleagues, I think, on the actual printout. We may, one item may have been missed, but I do know it was posted legally, so I'll read it out loud. So items on the Cassette Agenda are 5.2, Contract Continu, Contract Continuation, Olive Oil, Olive, no, Olive View, sorry. 5.3, Approval of Healthy Food Certification. 5.4, Appointment of Hartford School Building and Committee Member Yvette Bello. 5.5, Approval, Authorized Signatory of Hartford Public Schools Deputy Superintendent Paul Foster. And 5.6, Approval of Minutes, March 21st of 2023. Any comments or questions on the Cassette Agenda?
Comment, just?
Board Member Johnson?
Approval of Authorized Signature, Signatory of Hartford Public Schools to Paul Foster. I understand this is only a consent agenda, and, you know, once we vote to move this forward, there, it's done, but I just, Superintendent, do you mind just giving a brief explanation to our public why this is necessary for us to move in this manner?
We usually have a backup signatory. Currently, I believe, is Chief Davis-Gooch is added as a signatory when we did not have, there was a transition in the team, and I needed a second person to, to be a signatory. And Chief Davis-Gooch assumed that, and so there's going to be a shift now that we have a deputy superintendent.
Thank you.
To that degree, can you actually explain why there's two signatures needed?
Christina, I want to make sure that there's policy around that?
Yes, it's your backup, if the superintendent is not able to sign, she has, is ideally the CFO and now the deputy to sign for the, on behalf of the district.
Should I not be available to sign?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Clarifying question on that.
Board Member Brody?
If we... I'm, I'm trying to phrase it right. So if we had an acting superintendent, would, how would that affect the signature? The signatory, I'm sorry. Would we have to, would it stay in place as is, or would there be a need? Because you said if you're not able to, but if we don't have a sitting superintendent, how does that affect it?
So I, I'll let you answer, but I think if, if we do have an acting, I think we would have to revisit.
This and?
Correct.
Make them a signature in it, okay. Thank you.
And the acting superintendent would assume the primary signatory, as a primary signatory?
Final comment?
Board Member Johnson?
This isn't a knock against Paul Foster, we actually kind of like you, man, so it was just a, an inquisitive question. Don't want you to leave here thinking that we don't like you, we appreciate you, man.
Thank you, Board Member Johnson. Do I have a motion to take the Cassette Agenda up as one item?
So move.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays?
Aye.
Any nays? We have one nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Now that the Cassette Agenda is one item, do I have a motion to vote on the Cassette Agenda?
So move.
Second.
All those, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Aye.
Nay.
Any abstentions? We have one nay, one abstentions. The ayes have it. Motion moves. The April 18th Hartford Board of Education meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and have a great evening.
Thank you, good night.
Take care, Kim.